To bills pending, we'll have third reading of 2011-162.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Nick Rackers Heating and Cooling Incorporated, doing business as AirServe of Central Missouri for the fire station HVAC modification project.
Roger.
We took bids on these fire station improvements for their air conditioning system, and the low bid was submitted by Nick Rackers Heating and Cooling, so we're here this evening to recommend approval of this bid of ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, and this is coming out of the city budget.
What stations does this include, Chief?
I believe all five stations have some impact.
So this will get you a lot of the updates that you've been looking for over the last couple of years, as far as ventilation and stuff goes?
As far as ventilation and heating, it will not do anything structurally.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Any other questions of Roger or Chief on 2011-162? Dr. Pope?
This is not a question, Roger, but a comment, since this is the ninth and final bill that you're speaking of tonight. I just wanted to say, and I know I'm speaking for all of us, we're very happy that you're here. Your expertise, professionalism, and attention to detail is a great thing for all of us, and we do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well said, Dr. Pope. Okay, at this point in time, a discussion on one, excuse me, on 2011-162, seeing none,
Carol?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Coon?
Aye.
Lubert?
Aye.
roll call, please.
Pope? Carol?
Aye.
Aye.
Schulte? Harvey?
Aye.
Aye.
Scrivner? Coon?
Aye.
Aye.
Weber? Lubert?
Aye.
Aye.
Bray? Pope?
Aye.
Aye.
Carol? Schulte?
Aye.
Aye.
Harvey? Scrivner?
Aye.
Aye.
Coon? Weber?
Aye.
Aye.
Lubert? Bray?
Aye.
Aye.
Pope? Carol?
Aye.
Aye.
Schulte?
Okay, motion passes.
Aye.
Now we'll have third reading of 2011-164.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Weber? An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
to execute a ground lease agreement with Central Missouri Realty Company for land at Harvey?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Now we'll move on to the informal calendar, and for that, I will call on Councilman Bob
the Jefferson City Memorial Airport.
Drew?
Thank you. I suppose Roger could've done this one, too. Made a clean sweep.
He could go ten for ten. Scrivner for 2011-154.
This is a lease agreement with Central Bank to continue their airport lease. Bob, what would you like to do tonight? I've moved a substitute of fourteen thirteen. The old one expired, so this is just a new one.
Okay, so there's a substitution on the floor. Okay, any questions at the council? Is there a second? Seeing none, roll call, please. Wait a second.
I suppose you should take it off the informal calendar first, then substitute,
Harvey?
Aye.
Coon?
and then you can always put it back on the informal at the end if you're not ready.
Aye.
Lubert?
Aye.
Bob would like to take it off the informal.
Pope?
Aye.
Schulte?
Is there anyone that would like to leave it on there?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Weber?
Seeing none, it's now officially off of the informal calendar, and Bob, go ahead.
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
And now we'll move.
Harvey?
I know what you're gonna say.
Aye.
Coon?
Is there a second?
Aye.
Lubert?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that this be substituted.
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Discussion.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Now we will discuss 2011-154 as substituted. Discussion. Wait a second.
Do you want to have Mr. Hilbert do a brief introduction of it and explain the substitute?
Sure, go ahead.
Sure. The substitute, the bill itself is substituted to reflect that if you vote on it tonight, it'll reflect that date. The plan of intent is amended to show that the Quarry property, which was originally shown as M2, would be now C2. Actually, I'm sorry, reverse that. It's shown as C2, and it'll be shown as M2. And also, the J.C. Mattress property, there was a section that we had shown as M1, I believe it was M1, and the owners, whether they support the issue or not, you know, if it passes, requested that it changed to C2, and that's certainly amenable for the use that they have. And then some other, I think Janice had some other changes, not a tremendous substance, just typographical stuff in the plan of intent itself.
Okay, and that's part of the Scrivner substitute? Is that what we should call this one, or?
Sure.
Okay, all right. Any discussion on the Scrivner substitute? Seeing none, roll call, please. Oh, we did? Oh, okay, now as substituted, I'm sorry. Discussion as substituted. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I move to amend Bill 2011-154 by deleting from the annexation area the commercial properties owned by Land Investments LLC, The Quarry, J.C. M. Jeff City LLC, Jeff City Mattress Factory, and La Bella Enterprises, The Hampton Inn, and Periwinkle Hospitality Inc., The Comfort Suites.
Okay, at this point in time, there is an amendment on the floor, which we'll call the Pope Amendment for this discussion this evening. Is there a second to the Pope Amendment? Seconded by Carrie. Okay, discussion. We have a first and second. Dr. Pope?
Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, it's a public record that back in November at our annexation committee meeting, I opted to look at the options, and later on in February of this year, voted for the resolution to move forward with the bill that's before us tonight, minus the substitutions. Since the public hearing, I have had reason to give further consideration to my decisions, and I would offer this amendment for the following reasons. If you refer to the plan of intent, and hopefully the pages of the green one that we got originally are the same and haven't changed, but if we look at page two under our plan of intent, the history of this annexation initiative, a neighborhood meeting was held with the Meadows Club residents, the meeting also included input from current residents, and the staff met with interested stakeholders, including Three Rivers and Regional West. Leading to number four, voluntary annexation will not achieve the goal of this intent. And this is where I'm, where by looking at some previous history, I'm wondering if that is the case. Our reasoning that voluntary annexation will not achieve the goal is that first, it creates a danger to the other landowners that are not yet ready to annex, and also voluntary annexations tend to be erratic based on development at specific locations, and it does not lend itself to orderly and planned development. I want to cite three or four items that possibly would give us something else to think about. In 1992, the original Meadows-by-the-Club development was a voluntary annexation. Additionally, in 1997, the enlargement of Meadows-by-the-Club, the Turnberry Development, south of the Meadows, was also a voluntary annexation. In 2010, ordinance 1465-7, was a voluntary annexation from 421 Pinehurst, which is now between one of the original, the 1992 voluntary annexation, and the area in question. So within the residential area, there's a long history of voluntary annexations. We also, item four, have a very favorable history with Land Development LLC. I was on the council, and it was a ten to nothing vote, August the first of 2005, when we voluntarily received the quarry on Edgewood. And so with that in mind, it seems that the residential area would be amenable to a voluntary annexation, and also with our history, our favorable history with Land Development LLC, that the quarry there on Edgewood was, they were happy to voluntarily annex, and would probably be in the same, of the same mind today. On the third page, I'm going to come back to discussing item two, annexation of the area is economically feasible, and the sentence that the city is in a sound financial position. I think there's some question on page fourteen, the effects of annexation. This deals all with essentially residential properties, and I believe there is a substantial effect that is not mentioned here to the commercial properties. Most importantly, I think, the utility charges that will go up for the mattress factory location and the hotels. From a financial point of view, in the last three years, three furniture stores in Jefferson City have closed, two on Missouri Boulevard and one on Madison Street. So it's not necessarily with the condition of the housing crisis that this is necessarily a great time for furniture companies. This company, on the south side of this, of the highway, not only has a furniture retail establishment, but also a manufacturing facility. And so the manufacturing facility is providing jobs that don't necessarily have any reflection in our sales tax. However, my understanding is they have over a hundred thousand feet under roof, which is a substantial space to heat and cool. So their utility taxes are going to increase substantially. The next thing I would like to look at is page sixteen, where what will we do with this property? Page fifteen first, pardon me, at the bottom, a number, letter C, existing and future commercial land uses. Future commercial development in this area is likely to occur in the vicinity of highway intersections. If you look at page appendix one, pardon me, you will see the footprint on the commercial space, M1, the, on the south side of the highway, the footprint of the buildings on Jeff City Mattress property, that triangle, M1, C2, M1, the entire space is occupied by buildings. There is no space for future commercial development there. If you look at the north side that contains the hotel, I don't know, I certainly don't see any space there within that land area for future commercial development. And then all the rest is highway right-of-way. So I really don't see anything on this space, minus the little bit there at the edge of the quarry, on the southwest side of the M1 designation. So I'm wondering about future commercial development. That about covers what I wanted to bring up tonight. I believe this is primarily a residential forced annexation that is not necessary. I believe we have a good history with all of these residents, county residents now, many of them that work in the city. The feasibility of bringing the commercials areas into the city, I think, is somewhat questionable, and I then go back to page three. I do believe that the city is in a sound financial position, but within the last couple of weeks, I've heard otherwise at several meetings, and I don't think we can have it both ways. If we are going to put this before the voters in August, and the assumption is we are in a sound financial position, between now and August, while we're going through the budget process, we cannot threaten with great reductions in staff and loss of revenue. So those are my comments. I have doubts about the feasibility of this, and so that's all I've got to say.
All right, Dr. Pope, any other questions or comments? I do want to ask Nathan, just for a, for background information, what was the general feel out of our annexation hearings that we've had over the last few months or in the last timeframe?
Well, you know, this process started close to nine months ago now, and obviously, it's been looked at repeatedly by the council, and we've kind of looked over all of these issues and examined them, I think, in quite detail, and that's really all reflected in this fairly comprehensive report is all the input that we got. You know, we have met with the people at the residential area. I would say my impression is sixty to seventy percent of them support annexation, about forty percent don't. It is kind of a hodgepodge, so if you did voluntary annexation, they would come in, I think that the statement in there is factually correct. They would come in in a scattered pattern, because not everyone is going to sign. I would say an evidence of that is that when this, when the first part came in voluntarily, in the years that have passed, there haven't been any, there's been one annexation voluntarily in all that time. So I think it's unlikely they're going to come in voluntarily. But that's, we had one public hearing that the commercial people also attended. You know, obviously, their position is different. They're having trouble seeing the value of being participants in the city to them. That's kind of a policy judgment, I think, was kind of pointed out. You know, obviously, we do offer services that they don't have, and we do offer improved services, but that's largely a value judgment. It's not a factual statement to say that they will get nothing out of this annexation. That's just simply factually not true. But, you know, whether they get is more than what they think that they're going to give, I guess that's a value judgment.
Okay, thank you, Nathan. Discussion, Carrie.
Thank you, and I agree that the discussion needs to happen about the amendment. I don't support the amendment to delete the commercial properties. And I know, you know, we've had meetings in November, December, we've discussed it, and now here we are, ready to move it forward, and there were some concerns that have come out recently, but I still feel like it is time to look at doing this orderly and in small pieces. And I know in the past, I remember years ago, even when Tom was involved with other annexations, and they were very large, and so I think we are doing the right thing by doing it in small pieces and orderly. And I know one of the comments, what I would like to try to share is when David Maymert mentioned that there's no advantage to being in the city, is that maybe there's a way that we can, and it is, like you said, a judgment call, is there advantage or not? But to show what the advantages are, I would like this to be, you know, a lot more positive experience, and to have people want to come into the city more. And I know, as a business owner, I think the concern is that it will cost more for customers, and I relate to that as well. And I know, just on a personal note, that really has nothing to do with this, when I bought our furniture at J.C. Mattress, it was not necessarily, I don't think we thought about the tax issue, but more that you had the selection and the nice furniture in town, and so that's what led us to be customers, but that's on a tangent there. But, and another comment by Robert Weiss about leveling the playing field, and when I'm done, if you could address the sixteen businesses that were not chosen, and I'm not sure, you know, if it was their proximity and not-for-profit and churches, but if you could touch on that, because I think that was a valid question that needs to be addressed, and if there are businesses that should have been included, maybe we need to revisit that. And are we going to take the other businesses was also posed by Robert, such as the furniture store on 54 and other areas of town. And in this case, I feel that knowing that this is within a mile, you know, when you look at something within a mile of city limits, it does make it different than something that's farther out, and proximity is so important to planned growth, and where the population is swelled is definitely out west. And I look at Fourth Ward and think that when most wards were five thousand, our ward had swelled to seven thousand, which is exciting and great, but that's where the growth is, which is why we're looking at this area. And I know Tom had mentioned about maybe not including the other commercial businesses, and I think that's, I understand that point, but at the same time, all the annexations we've done over the years, we always include the commercial. If we didn't, we would have a city that would, I mean, if we hadn't included commercial, that would be, I think, a detriment, because commercial is part of it. It can't just be the residential, and when you think of the days when Monroe Downtown was city limits, and then you look at when Country Club Drive at the Mall was city limits, and you look at how we've grown, and I think commercial is very important to that. And also, I want to put out there that it's not, because you mentioned how the business owners can't vote, because their businesses there, but not their residents, that this is not a city rule. It's, I believe it's a state statute we're following, so it's not, I want people to understand, it's not something that the ten of us have decided this is how we want to proceed. It's a state statute that this is kind of the process that we're following. And on the other side of it as well, I'm trying to balance those inside and outside the city limits. People are asking me to say, well, the council should look at the areas outside the city limits and put a little pressure on us to be a little more fair than subsidizing the areas outside. I mean, they want the roads to be nice leading to these businesses, because that's the access that it takes for their business to be successful. So I'm also hearing the other side of it as well, that we have a responsibility to those who do live inside the city, because they want it to thrive, we want it to thrive for all of us. We just want to make sure that those areas are maintained. And I would also pose the question, Nathan, that there might be areas that those who are inside the city limits are putting pressure on us to say, here's why those areas, it would be favorable to annex them, and you can answer that if you want to as well. And I don't really want to say that, you know, we want to annex them for the added money and the tax revenue, and that they don't want to be annexed because of the added money and cost to the customers. I think there are so many pros and cons at play, that I think that there is a way to be neighborly and to look at the big picture as a whole, and the growth of Jefferson City as a whole. So I hope we can get there and find a way that there would be some benefits, and what the benefits are maybe haven't fully been shared, and, you know, I don't think this amendment would pass if it were to pass, so I, and I guess either way, I'd like to maybe find what it would take to make it more favorable for those businesses to want to be in the city, and what we can do for them and for the future annexations, so.
I've got a question for Nathan. David and Robert and Tom, thanks for coming forward tonight. I asked Nathan this the other day, I think, at our Brown Bagel meeting. As an individual business, I was wanting to see, you know, how long does your business model have to change before these taxes would take effect? Could you explain that, Nathan, for the audience and our business owners that are here?
Sure. Under the current bill, we usually set it six months out, under the way the timing of this one works, the voters would approve it in August. You usually try and time it with the beginning of our fiscal year, which would be November first, but that's really close. And, you know, in this particular case, there's a lot to be done, you know, before the annexation. I know that we're required to file a declaratory judgment. Mr. Pury has indicated that he's going to drag that out as long as he possibly can, so that would, what we put in the bill is November of thirteen, so businesses from, would have a little over a year from the date of the election and about eighteen months from now.
Okay, did you have any other comments, Carrie?
Well, I'm trying to cancel a couple of our questions. Originally, we started with looking at a much, much larger area. There were parcels A through N that were part of this. We ended up just going with, I think, three of those sections. There were originally twenty commercial properties that were looked at, and a lot of them, you know, were taken out. There was, and still is, a lot of pressure inside the city from people who own businesses and live inside the city that say they would like to compete on a fair basis. It is not fair that somebody can have a business just out of the city, outside of the city limits and advertise they don't have to pay sales tax. So there is that pressure, and I guess the council is kind of responding to that. You know, in terms of exactly which ones were included, which ones were not, I think the council's selection was good. There's always going to be people who are going to say, you could have added this, or you shouldn't have added that. You know, it's a process, once the city made the decision, and I think it was the right decision following the big annexation, to go in incremental steps, you're always going to have this question of who's going to be included and who's not going to be included. The only answer to that is to include everybody and do big annexations, which I think we all know are the wrong thing, and we shouldn't, you know, allow ourselves to be enticed back into doing what we know is the wrong thing.
Okay, moving on to comments from the council. Thank you. Councilman Coon?
I think there's an easy way to find out if Councilman Pope's amendment has legs, and then I'll move the question.
Okay, the question's been moved. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded by Councilman Pope. Okay, all those in favor of calling for the question and ending debate, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Now we will be voting on the Pope Amendment, which would exclude the Quarry, Jeff City Mattress Factory, Hampton Inn, and Comfort Suites, known as the Pope Amendment. Roll call, please.
Bray?
No.
Carol?
No.
Harvey?
No.
As an individual business, I was wanting to see, you know, how long does your business model have to change before these taxes would take effect? Could you explain that, Nathan, for the audience and our business owners that are here?
Sure. Under the current bill, we usually set it six months out, under the way the timing of this one works, the voters would approve it in August. You usually try and time it with the beginning of our fiscal year, which would be November first, but that's really close. And, you know, in this particular case, there's a lot to be done, you know, before the annexation. I know that we're required to file a declaratory judgment. Mr. Purie has indicated that he's going to drag that out as long as he possibly can, so that would, what we, we put in the bill is November of thirteen, so businesses from, would have a little over a year from the date of the election and about eighteen months from now.
Okay. Did you have any other comments, Carrie?
Well, I'm trying to cancel a couple of our questions. Originally, we started with looking at a much, much larger area. There were parcels A through N that were part of this. We ended up just going with, I think, three of those sections. There were originally twenty commercial properties that were looked at, and, and a lot of them, you know, were taken out. There was, and still is, a lot of pressure inside the city from people who own businesses and live inside the city that say they would like to, to compete on a fair basis. It is not fair that somebody can have a business just out the city, outside of the city limits and advertise they don't have to pay sales tax. So there is, there is that pressure, and I guess the council is, is kind of responding to that. You know, in terms of, of exactly which ones were included, which ones were not, I think the council's selection was good. There's always going to be people who are going to say, you could have added this, or you shouldn't have added that. You know, it's, it's a process, once the city made the decision, and I think it was the right decision following the big annexation, to go in incremental steps, you're always going to have this question of who's going to be included and who's not going to be included. The only answer to that is to include everybody and do big annexations, which I think we all know are the wrong thing, and we shouldn't, you know, allow ourselves to be enticed back into doing what we know is the wrong thing.
Okay. Moving on to comments from the council. Thank you. Councilman Coon.
I think there's an easy way to find out if Councilman Pope's amendment has legs, and then I'll move the question.
Okay. The question's been moved. Is there a second?
All second.
It's been moved and seconded by, by Councilman Pope. Okay. All, all those in favor of calling for the question and ending debate, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Now we will be voting on the Pope Amendment, which would exclude the quarry, Jeff City Mattress Factory, Hampton Inn, and Comfort Suites, known as the Pope Amendment. Roll call, please.
Bray.
No.
Carol.
No.
Harvey.
No.
Coon.
No.
Lubert.
No.
Pope.
Aye.
Schulte.
No.
Scrivner.
No.
Weber.
No.
Motion fails. Okay. Now we are back to the original twenty-eleven dash one fifty-four, as originally substituted by Mr. Scrivner. Is that right? It's kind of a play-by-play up here. Okay. Discussion. Councilman Scrivner.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to, I guess, try not to repeat some of the things Carrie said, because I agree primarily with what she said. But I do want to point out a couple of things here. I've been on the council since October two thousand eight, and I don't know just exactly how many times we've met and discussed annexation, but I know we've met on different occasions and, and discussed it several times. And most of the time, the conversation or the discussion has been around the fact that we do not, have not had in place an orderly and systematic and timely annexation plan. We, we had the large annexation, we were rebuffed by those that we were trying to annex. We were rebuffed by the voters of Jefferson City, mostly because they felt like it was too big, too much at one time. But because we hadn't done anything over a long period of time, those in charge at that time felt the necessity to do something big. Okay? So what we said as a council in these meetings is that we were going to put together an annexation plan that was going to be smaller, systematic, orderly, and timely. And when the staff came to us and presented either four or five options to us here about nine months ago, they said that that was part of, of why they were doing it like they were, and, and part of the reason that these five options were being presented to us is because they would represent the first step in creating an orderly and systematic and timely methodology of annexation, and that we would probably do this more than likely on an annual basis, that there would be some proposed annexation. And again, it would be so we wouldn't be hit with this huge annex, the, the need to catch up, if you will. And as I said, we were presented, I don't remember if it was five or four, but one of those proposals had the businesses that were suggested that maybe they should have been annexed by Mr. Wise, one of the proposals included those. And this council discussed it and debated it and decided on the annexation proposal that's essentially the one that's before us tonight. And, you know, I take a little bit of exception when someone says that they don't receive a benefit from the city. To me, that is, is a, almost an incredulous comment, because I think that everyone, whether they live in Cole County, if they live even in Osage or Miller or Callaway, Mary's, there are any number of, of Boone County, this city grows by about thirty-seven thousand people every day. And those thirty-seven thousand are people that are coming here to work. This, whether we like it or not, the Jefferson City area, and Jefferson City particularly, is the economic engine of this area. The hotels that are outside the city weren't built there because they just happened to choose that spot. They chose that spot because it's close to Jefferson City. Mr. Wise admitted himself that his people come into Jefferson City, the people that stay there, come into Jefferson City to shop and to do business. Now, the question is, do they come to his hotel because they've decided to come to Jefferson City for some reason and, and decide to stay there? Or did they decide to stay there, and, oh, by the way, Jefferson City's nice and close, we'll just happen to go into town and shop for a while? People that sit around and attack the city, in essence, are attacking themselves. Their prosperity, if you live close to Jefferson City, is tied to Jefferson City. I'm not going to say that it is entirely dependent on Jefferson City, but for many of us, it's entirely dependent on the city, on the city doing well, on the city growing, on the city prospering. There are a lot of, of criteria that companies use to decide where they're going to locate, where they're going to create a business, and where they're going to create jobs. And unfortunately, because we haven't grown like maybe we could have and should have over the years, we oftentimes don't meet the cut. We, we don't meet the criteria for those businesses decide, to decide to come to Jefferson City. So every city, whether it's Jefferson City or otherwise, needs to have orderly growth. They need to, if, if they, if they want to, to attract these jobs, if, if, if more people live here, that's more potential customers for J.C. Mattress Factory. That's more potential relatives coming to visit, or, or business people coming to be here overnight and stay in hotels. Everyone benefits from an orderly growth in our city. And, and one other point I want to make. Should we grant businesses the power to establish what is going to be our border? Because that's what we're being asked to do. If I go outside the city, find a vacant lot, and build a, establish a business, should that entitle me to be able to say forever, I don't want to be in the city, don't take me in? Where would we be, and Councilman Carol brought that up, where would we be if we had been restricted to the original footprint of Jefferson City? How big is it? Ten blocks? You know? If the businesses that had established themselves outside the city limits at that time had been allowed to say, no, I don't want to be in the city, and the council at that time would have said, okay, and not eventually annex them into the city, where would, where would this prosperous trade area that we have today, where would the people that depend on that be? And I'll make another point. Property values in and outside the city, but especially outside the city, are directly dependent on the, on Jefferson City. Look, look what property values that are close to our city limits, how, how inflated they are because of the fact that they're expected to be developed and eventually taken into the city. Another point. How, how good is someone's planning and foresight if they establish a business on the borders of your city and then do not have the foresight and planning to understand that at some point in time, they're potentially going to be annexed into the city? Our city has a history of growing to the west. Anyone that can't see that we have systematically grown to the west and, and would establish a business on our western border and think that we might not someday annex them is not thinking very far ahead. So I will be voting for this annexation.
Okay. Any other comments? Councilman Lubert.
Well, I would have liked to have said, somewhat like Councilman Scrivner said, but I couldn't said it quite as well, so I'll agree with what he says and, and second the motion or whatever, so.
Okay. Dr. Pope.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for Nathan. In this area, how, how many registered voters will be added to the fourth ward?
Janice, do you know the answer to that?
I don't know the precise number of voters. There are thirty-five dwelling units in this area.
Thirty-five.
A population, the population estimate is sixty-five.
Sixty-five. Okay. Well, I-
Dr. Pope, follow up.
I ask, in order to have this discussion, I had, I talked to Councilwoman Carol about giving me a second. Obviously, I knew that this was going to be an eight-to-one vote, but because she was going to be representing these people, and as Councilman Lubert will be representing these people. And, and I was mistaken because all of the rest of the third ward and the fourth ward are divided by Highway fifty, and I thought earlier, well, of course, you know, I'm going to represent, however, there are no voters in the bit of what's north of the fifty, so I'm not going to be getting any voters, or Councilman Scrivner either, any, any additional voters, but we will get two fine businesses. And that was my purpose in offering the amendment, and that was representation. I believe our job is to represent our constituents and our potential constituents. And it's a cinch, these people are going to be annexed, or at least we are going to place it on the ballot and give the voters the opportunity to decide, and in a spirit of good faith, we needed to have this open discussion. And I want to say, in closing, that this is not a matter, this is not a, a thing of us against them or them against us. It's not county, city, or anything like that, because the people that are being, that are coming in, first of all, probably ninety percent of the folks in the Meadows work in Jefferson City, have businesses, and have at one time or another lived in the city. The, the principles of land development, the principles of land development live in that area. They're city residents. There's a long history of the family that owns Jefferson City Mattress. They are longtime residents. And of course, the people that are connected to the two hotels additionally are already citizens in that they have other businesses or a business in the downtown area. So this is not something that we want to try to alienate anyone, and, and planned, organized annexation is certainly something that a city has to look at all the time. My job here, I want to mention to the people out there that came to testify against this, my job is to represent, all of our jobs is essentially to represent the best interest of the current city residents, and that's who I represent today. I did want to offer this conversation, though, to the folks that soon, hopefully, will have an opportunity to be Jefferson Cityans also.
Okay. Other discussion. Seeing none, I feel you're ready to vote. We'll have roll call, please, on twenty-eleven dash one fifty-four, as substituted by Mr. Scrivner.
Lubert.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Carol.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Coon.
Aye.
Motion passes. No resolutions tonight, no presentations from the gallery that anyone has signed up for. Number twenty, council and staff discussion of presentation topics from earlier. Seeing none. Any new business tonight?
I have new business. Phyllis, our clerk, reminded me that tomorrow is Election Day. As you all know, many of our Americans in the service have given the ultimate sacrifice so that we may vote. I would ask that all of you tomorrow that have, that you, that you are a registered voter, to please go out and vote and, and make everything that they've done worth something tomorrow with polls. Any unfinished business? Any scheduled reports? Carrie.
I have, just have an announcement. I wanted to mention that at historic City of Jefferson's annual meeting, which was the Sunday before last, that the fire department made a very nice historic preser, historic presentation about the history of the fire department over the last hundred years. So if anyone wasn't there and didn't get a chance to see it, it was, I'm sure they'll be presenting it again since it's their hundredth year, but it was very impressive to see how they started and, and where it's come from, so I appreciate them taking the time to make that effort. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Carrie. Any other scheduled reports? Seeing none. Pursuant to section six-ten dot zero-two-one of the revised statutes of Missouri, the council will now entertain a motion to go into closed session to deal with personnel and legal issues. Is there a motion on the floor? It's been moved and seconded. It's moved by Lubert, seconded by Mr. Harvey. Discussion, seeing none. Roll call, please.
Bray.
Aye.
Carol.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Coon.
No.
Lubert.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Coon.
No.
Lubert.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Okay. We will be adjourned until we meet across the hall for seven minutes. Drew, I need to see you first.